Point from the minute?
Yeah.
I'll get all the credit.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe not.
I'm sure.
All right, open this work session. Work session tonight is to discuss three topics. We're going to start with the budget, then we're going to discuss briefly the Little League concession stand complex, and finally some transportation initiatives and prioritization. So we'll just go straight to the budget.
May remember from council, there are at least two questions that the staff needs some direction on as we work to prepare the final ordinance for your consideration later in the evening. This is not to preclude any additional changes, revisions, or questions the council has, but simply to get out on the table and discuss the two that we've got hanging, and then we'll accept any additional direction the council has. The first of the two questions, it was considerable discussion at the last meeting regarding funding for additional funding over and above what was in the manager's proposed budget for the school division. And what staff needs some direction on is whether or not the council feels it's appropriate to augment that funding, if so, in what amount and from what funding source. That's the first question. The second relates to the solid waste fee.
Okay. So the first one, I think, was the discussion about, there was some brief discussion about picking up enough extra increase, this would be above the 137,000.
Yes, sir.
That the schools asked for, and this would be to take care of health insurance increases and?
VRS.
DRS.
VRS.
FICA.
VRS and FICA.
And, if anybody wants to, bottom line, I think I've spoken with most of you and I believe that we're aligned to look at salary increases again later after the end of the fiscal year. That's at least where I personally am, but I'm sure the city manager would like everybody's direction on what's forthcoming tonight.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to see us use the 210,000 for the, keep the solid waste fees the same and increase our funding to the schools. And that really doesn't require any kind of budget adjustment, does it?
The 210,000 is to use general fund balance?
Mm-hmm.
You certainly can do that. So it's really merging both questions together. The second series of questions, what do you want to do with solid waste fee? And if you don't want to do it, and it seems that the council would like to postpone that as long as possible, in doing so, your choices are to fund it from the general fund or from the small fund associated with that operation. Your point was to take it from the general fund. We can calculate that certainly. And then, Mr. Green, just so that I'm clear, was your intention then, in your statement, that the balance of 210,000 be augmented, added to what was appropriated for schools in the new budget?
Not all of it.
Okay, some portion.
Just, just what?
Can you give us some ideas, what portion?
About the 28,000, that would take the cover of the cost of GMS, VRS, FICA, and?
Health insurance.
Health insurance. So that whatever they got, the $350 raise or increase would be $350 and not $150.
Okay. Is that going to be, you know, I guess?
And the rest, I guess, I agree, Buddy, keeping the solid, put it to the solid waste fund for now until we figure out what we're really going to do with that there.
So what?
Can't keep ignoring it.
Can they hear those numbers, Tracy? So what are we talking? Can you clarify the numbers for me, please?
Seventy-nine, 72,100 would be what we would need to take from the general fund balance to get rid of the solid waste fee. $28,000 is what I hear for the schools.
Whatever, whatever it comes out to.
Okay.
What was the number I'm going?
72,100 for solid waste. And I'm here, like I said, I'm hearing $28,000 for the schools.
That's what I heard.
And, um?
Well, I don't know. I'll let the school finance person come up with, I guess, figures on what it would cost, I would imagine.
Here's, here's where I thought we were going, but, you know, I'm certainly willing to follow the majority here because it's certainly within my thought process that we were going to revisit all salaries after this budget. I want to leave the, the 72,100 is not an argument, not even a sticking point for me. That's, that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's a yay vote. The additional funding for the schools, the 28,000, I would like to look at total compensation for city employees as well as school employees at the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th.
Right, and we need to get on the other side of April 15th so we have a soft close on the books.
Right.
Does that mean taking the 134,000?
August 15th.
August 15th.
So that just means taking the 72,100. And the additional $200,000 that Buddy's discussing is actually going to end up in the unappropriated fund balance. Is that correct? That's his, the, this is the personal property tax that we were over on, personal property tax more than we thought.
For 2011.
That is correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's where you're going.
Rear last fund balance update?
Okay, got it now.
If we do it that way, do we really, I mean, all we need to do is move that we keep these rates the same and we, and we can, we can do it at the end of the fiscal year and look at what you're talking about. Do we really, do we need to do anything as far as telling you where it's coming from?
My, yes, sir. I think you, with, with the solid waste fee, I think you should plan a balanced fund, and then if you choose to change it subsequent to that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Perfectly fine to do that. And the 72,100 will take the place of the planned increase in the fees, so the fees wouldn't change, and the fund would be whole.
And the original discussion was to take that from the fund balance of the solid waste fund itself, not the general fund. Does that make any difference to you? I mean, it's, it's kind of a shell game on money, everybody. It's, there's, there's the two buckets. If they, all we need to tell them is which one to take it out of. Unappropriated, or do they take it out of the fund balance for the solid waste fund? And then, is the other discussion that we have to have after budget time is the replacement of a solid waste truck? And do we do that potentially out of the other one we didn't mess with?
Yeah, I would say we would, I personally would rather us take it out of the general fund
Okay.
and leave that for anything that we may need that's strictly related to buying new piece of equipment or something.
I'm good with that. So, everybody okay to, if we're going to do that, to take it out of the? Yeah, I'm going to get, I'll let Tracy speak. Basically, what I'm hearing is take it out of the general fund, unappropriated fund balance. Right? That's what I'm hearing.
Good idea on the floor.
Take what out of the general?
72,100.
So that we don't increase fees?
So that we do not increase the fees.
Yes, thank you.
Okay?
Yes.
All right. And then, the additional $28,000 that we were talking about for teachers, I would like to have a more, a more unified, you know, decision on all employees before I do something else.
Does that mean we're going to take the 134,000 that is currently programmed for teacher increases or staff increases and hold that until, you know, we decide?
No, we're going to, we're going to, because the 137 is the amount that we did for city employees last year.
Wow.
That we're trying to catch the teachers up to where we were. And then, to keep us all even and to, at least on our employee base, my thought process was to address them all in a single, at a single time instead of what we did last year. Because I can see us always going, well, which one did we do last?
Yeah.
So that catches them up to what we did last year, and then we consider wholesale personnel, you know, pay, or, and let me say, this is not an expectation. We may not have the money to do anything. But it certainly, you know, is a discussion point in the very near future, you know, I'm thinking the summer timeframe.
But we're going to increase the fund for the teachers to catch them up anyway?
We're going to fully fund the request of the school board, which is, which includes the 137, and no other action that I know of needs to be taken. That, that's already there, that's already programmed in what we will, what's on our, in our packet tonight. The only thing that's not covered in the packet tonight is if we want to shift to 72,100. So that's the only change that I'm hearing that we want to address tonight, at least from my perspective.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Nothing would preclude at a later point when the year is over, making some adjustment, be it the 28,000 or perhaps more if the funds are available.
Correct.
That's correct, yeah.
Correct. I think we need to know where we end up on the unappropriated fund balance. I think we need to forecast out into 2013, because if we do it, I'd like to see us do it as a raise, not a bonus. We need to make sure that we can afford in years past that, that we could still afford what we do. Everybody okay with that?
But we do intend to do more for the schools than what's?
If.
Yeah.
If.
If we can.
Yep. Again, we're fully funding 100% of what they've requested.
Right.
Okay? And we did more than we were requested last year.
And that request includes catching them up to the city employees?
Yes. And we can actually, if you want, we'll put a soft schedule in place that says we'll address it on, in the second meeting in July. Will, will that be, will you have your books closed by then?
Books really don't close until September, but if you, if you got it to at least August, we would be pretty close.
Okay.
Because we've got accruals of revenues.
Why don't we, why don't we put it on a, why don't we do it this way? Why don't we put it as a work session subject in July? Get around about what it might cost. And then a decision in August.
And then we, we could get some figures, some generated, some what?
What those three items are.
Right. As well as city employees.
Right.
Do we know what $28,000 would mean to an individual in terms of the actual benefit to them? When you spread that over the number of employees in the school system, I suspect it's not significant.
How did we come up with that figure?
I don't know. That's what we need to know. What the actual VRS increase is, the FICA and?
Once you get raised by, you know, instead of, you know, a person getting, say, a flat $350 if we include the extra money for FICA of VRS, they'd probably end up with, what, $250?
Yeah.
Hundred dollars less or whatever.
It would be significantly less if you take all the benefits out of it.
So this 28,100, how did we arrive at that number?
From somebody's foggy memory.
That was, yeah, that was a?
That was a quick and dirty.
The superintendent is here, and if, if, I'm sure she would be pleased to answer any question that you may have, but my understanding, subject to her correction, is that if the budget is funded as proposed, they would be doing not an across-the-board flat dollar amount, but I think it's an, it's a percentage. And, and I believe, although I'm not sure of the source of the calculation with 28,000, it was the 28,000 that was sort of the bene, if, if all of the 137 was put into salary, then there would be a benefits cost on top of it. If we did it the other way, the, the benefits cost would roll in so that the salary thing would be less. I'm recalling Jennifer up, but I could be recalling this incorrectly, but at this amount, it was something like a 1.1%?
The 137,000 is a 1.02% raise. So we didn't, because of flat fee, we're doing it as a raise across the board. So $28,000 would be supposed to a 1, probably 1.25% raise.
I think I came up with the 28,000.
That's what I'm afraid of.
I had some help, though. I, I think it was a good guess, while we figured it would be.
So, is everybody okay to look at that at a work session in July?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So?
Got the direction we need?
Okay. So no other, any other budget questions that anybody has? Okay. I guess, is Little League coming tonight?
I'm in.
You want to, you want to present it?
Yeah, Jay got called away, unfortunately, and Gary's enlisted, or getting back from listening. Members of council, in your package, there are three doc, sets of documents pertaining to youth baseball and a concession stand slash storage building out at the Little League complex, which is a city-owned set of baseball fields immediately adjacent to the middle school football field. For the last year or so, Mr. Callis and I have been working with representatives from baseball, office superintendent's office, in an effort to try to help the baseball folks realize a dream that they have for upgrading the facilities out there, not only for their use, but for all users of the complex out there. What you see is, from the first page behind the cover in the work session materials, is a draft of a, of an MOU that was originally proposed by the baseball folks. It has been subject to continued discussion on our end, legal review, administrative review, and now represents something that, at least administratively, we all think we can, can live with. The project itself, you'll see schematics, exterior schematics and interior sketches of the facility in the next several pages. It is designed, its primary purpose, it has multiple purposes, but its primary purpose is as a concession stand. We have looked at different places that it could be located, but ultimately, this was the site that baseball thought would best meet their needs, and as they've got, will have the sweat equity and financial commitment for this facility, you see their site choice reflected in their request. So that you might understand better exactly where it is proposed to be. There is a fold-out, a color fold-out, and the item that we're talking about this evening is denoted in yellow. You'll note the restrooms to the backside and the concessions facing towards the baseball. This is on a piece of property that is currently owned by the school board, and we are working with the school board, you recall, we talked about this some time ago. We have a need between the schools and the city to trade some property back and forth in, in the greater complex so that those things that are most appropriately schools go to them, and most appropriately city for maintenance and operations go to us. This is something we hope to have for you within the next month. Superintendent's office has, has been a full, full partner in these, in these discussions. If I could, I will briefly outline what's being asked for. The Little League folks are asking for permission to construct on property that you can anticipate owning once the school transfer is over. They'd like the right of entry to construct the building that's denoted here. They will use it for its intended purposes, and they will be responsible for all things interior to the building stemming from their use, to include janitorial, furnitures and fixtures, routine replacements, again, stemming from their use. The building would own, be owned by the city, and as such, we would have the right, and certainly would, when appropriate, make it available to other groups, including the schools, when and if they wished to use it. We have a plan, depending on what the school is needed, with temporary fencing to either assure perimeter control for a controlled sports event, or simply access to the bathrooms, depending on what the school needs would be. What they're, what Little League is asking you for is to provide the land, which, again, is subject to future transfer from the schools. They're looking for assistance with the utilities. The agreement as drawn up says that we would pay up to $10,000 for the costs associated with the connection of the utilities, associated tap fees. That's a maximum for us, it would be based on their, on their real cost. Then, they are asking you also to consider reimbursement for their actual expenses, construction and materials of up to $25,000, once they've completed the building, turned it over to us, and provided the certificate of occupancy. So we have a building that's good, it's ready to go, ready to be used, ready to be taken over for operation by us. Their estimates for the building have varied, but the last time we talked about it, their estimate, not including the utility work, was about $60,000. So if the utilities, in fact, are about $10,000, what they're asking you for is a financial support of approximately half of their estimated cost. They're going to fund the other half, they're going to see to it's being built, the combination of contract and donated labor. Expectation, if this is in a form that is approvable at your next meeting, and that's the intention, to bring it back, not to, not to ask you to take action today, but the hope and expectation is that this facility will be ready to go by the fall sports season, and for, for anything, to include school use, should they desire to use it. Our, when we chose to use it, or the schools chose to use it, we would be responsible for cleaning it up, replacing anything we broke, including consumables. Under the MOU, we would be responsible for the exterior of the building. Needs a new roof someday, that's our issue. Needs a new refrigerator, assuming that we or a user didn't break it, that's basically our issue. So essentially, if it's not broken by someone else, if it simply wears out, the interior of the building's theirs to manage, the exterior's is ours, and it is ours to schedule. We began this process a year ago, as I said. We have looked at different sites. We at one point looked at a trailer, a concession trailer. We've, we've come full circle, but one thing is different. Since that time and now, as you may recall from the budget work session, we have received a $50,000 donation, which was unbudgeted and unplanned in the current year, for our work at the stadium. As we've already included in our budget, and in some cases paid, the costs associated with the, with the stadium itself, question, or part of the question that I think the council needs to, to deal with and, and to answer for itself, is whether or not it would make sense to invest a portion, up to $35,000, of that $50,000 that we've received, back into this complex. That's, that's the, the decision point. I would note that in future years, beginning FY12 and beyond, we have planned for this money. So the reason it's not planned this year is we weren't sure when we were going to get it, we had high confidence we were going to get it, but we weren't confident it was going to be this fiscal year, so it is not in the current year budget.
Was that a free, clear donation, or was that payment for the ball fields that we had?
It was a donation to, to help offset the city's expense pertaining to the stadium.
That had been pledged already.
That had been pledged already.
It was part of the money that was pledged when we upgraded the ballpark.
That's correct.
So it's more like a repayment than a donation?
It is.
Okay. I just was curious.
Well, it's, it's a fulfillment of a pledge.
Okay.
The question, I think, is whether or not you want to use that money, the repayment money, to use your term, to invest in the complex.
Before we get on to the pay, paying of stuff, I have a question that I apologize for not bringing up sooner. I'm wondering, you may have already thought of this when you thought about various locations. Have we looked at either renovating and/or moving or leaving it where it is? That little building next to the softball field there, that little gray house? I know it's in not, not super shape, but it may be more?
I think they store equipment in it.
It may be?
Is that the one on, on the school side, or is it the actual house?
Elementary school, it's the actual house.
The house, house?
The actual house over here.
Are you talking about this house?
It's right here, no, this house right here.
Yeah, this house over here.
No, not that house. This one here, right next to this, this field. There's a little house in the parking lot.
Yeah, I think we're talking.
Between the elementary school and the middle school parking lot?
Oh, yes, yes, I see. I'm sorry.
The little gray house?
Yeah.
I don't think that they, I can't speak for them. I don't think they focused on that because they were trying to get something that was more central to Diamonds One and Two. And I think?
But if it's significantly cheaper, it may be something to at least look at, and I don't know how much?
To renovate that house, I, I would, I would doubt it.
No? Okay, I've not been in it.
We looked at, I don't have the number. So if, that's something that the council would like, I can try to go get it, but we looked at whether or not we could use that house for other purposes, and the problems with that house were such that we couldn't use it for public use.
Okay.
And if I'm remembering the correct house.
As I, as I recall, right, what they're using it for right now is basically storage and, you know, basically assembling the?
Is that the one they use in Public Works?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, that house.
Yeah, the little house.
It's shot.
Yeah, I thought that, I thought that part of that middle school project, or elementary school project was going to take that down.
As I, as I recall, the, the other thing the Little League brought to us, you know, basically what we said was we wanted a facility that would service the complex. So that's why they chose the location. Obviously, it's a good fit for them because it overlooks and the, the two diamonds, which would be used during, basically, tournament season for Little League. So they liked that aspect. The other thing that the city liked about that was that the restrooms are on the backside. So with the temporary gate enclosures, basically dropping the ground poles, this would be readily available for restroom facilities for football. As well, they could choose to use the concession area if, if they feel like the dollars are there. But certainly, it brings the restroom facilities and, most importantly, the handicapped restroom facilities, because these are handicapped accessible to that football facility. So that's, that's kind of where they, why they chose the location that they did. So?
Why was the, the responsibilities divided up between the Little League and the city as far as, you know, the Little League dudes just doing the internal stuff and the city getting stuck with all the external repairs and whatever? Why not the Little League doing everything?
Let me, let me kind of talk to you about what the Little League expressed in our meeting. The, it's a cost share for the building of the facility. It's a $60,000 facility. They may get some donated labor. They may. They may not. It's a $60,000 building, of which we're going to pay up to 25.
25.
But 25 on the building.
Yeah.
$10,000 on getting the utilities to the building. So basically, it's, it's almost a 50-50 split, depending on how much it costs for us to get the utilities to the building. And then, it's a 50-50 split on maintaining it. My personal opinion is, once we get it built, that we take care of, you know, the cost of a refrigerator or whatever. To your point, Frank, the cost of the exterior maintenance will be probably higher, but it's not, it's not a large complex, and it's certainly something that, we've spent a lot of money to really put a first-class facility down there, yet we don't have all the services. We don't have the field house that we've been sorely needing, but at least this gives us some restroom facilities on the visitor's side of the, of the stadium, and it gives us some handicapped accessible. And I don't know what the, the football athletic director may choose to do or not to do based on the new location. They, they may go up for the whole new access egress plan. I don't know.
The other thing that I don't like, and is that we are responsible, the city's responsible for cleaning the facility and repair of damage inflicted on the facility if the city allows other organizations to utilize the facility. Why don't we put in, like, some kind of contract with another user that they're responsible for cleaning, put a fee in, a cleaning fee, so that we inspect it? And if they don't clean it properly, then we keep the fee for the cleaning or the maintenance or whatever. We got stuck down at Massey Point, and we had to take, you know, our employees from Public Works to other places to go down and clean out the bathrooms down there. And, you know, we don't have the manpower in Public Works to go around cleaning up, you know, the, the concession stand area.
So basically, we? So what you're describing, Frank, is not in this MOA, but you're saying that?
The city.
With whatever MOA we, if we choose to let another unit, another organization use this, we need to have an MOA that says that Parks and Rec will go and inspect it after their use?
Sure.
Just a feature.
Just like we do at the community center.
I have no, I have no problem with that, but that doesn't go in this one between us and the local.
Understand, understand, but that's something that, you know, I think we need, because I can't see our, our staff going down there and cleaning out the outside, inside, and whatever.
Absolutely. Our expectation would be that the using group would leave it like they found it, and we would check. Lessons learned at Massey and others that we've now implemented at the community center, and if we need to? And if we need to tighten it up further, we will.
Right. We'll have one standing between us and the schools where any athletic, you know, say it's field hockey that's out there, or it's soccer that's out there, we'll just have a quick check of the facility after their use, if they deem to use it.
Yes, just like we do at the community center.
Okay.
One point that...
If they mess it up, we won't let them use it again.
Under the, under the city part of it, about the eighth bullet down, where we talk about splitting the revenue, should we define the split? Is it fifty-fifty, sixty-forty?
They didn't define it. You certainly could define it. We talked about this a couple of times. I talked about this with superintendent today and, and with Mr. Callis. It says, if we charge, well, certainly wouldn't be my intention to charge the schools anything other than the janitorial cost if, if it was contracted than they did with their staff. But...
You can put anything you want, Mr. Callis.
Whatever he thinks is appropriate.
I think rather than just say split it, we probably ought to define it.
Thank you. I, I, I think they would be fine with any reasonable thing that, that the council would, would come up with.
Okay. And, and just a suggestion on, you know, maybe this isn't even something I should be monkeying with, but on the drawing under the footing, instead of crush or run, I would suggest we use fifty-seven gravel, just because of the high shrink swell that we have in most of the city. And also, under the crawl space, use the same thing instead of sand, because sand will draw moisture up under that building. And then you could do away with the poly barrier if it's, if it's...
Or we pass it on top of fifty-seven, if you want to. That's going to get torn up.
Have they given any indication of, of the source of funding? Either they have it, funds in hand?
They have, they have funds in hand. They've been fundraising for this for two, three years.
We recall several years ago, when the Little League came and they want to put in outdoor lights.
Yes.
And they had like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, that they footed.
They have funds in hand.
They, they footed for the lights, with the only exception being that they had first priority on the use of the fields.
Yeah.
So they probably still have, you know, money.
That's good. They had hoped, when we first began talking in May of last year, that they could fund all of it, with the exception of the use of the land and assistance with utility connections. But in those days, their sort of working budget, which really wasn't based on a schematic, it was just sort of gut feeling, was closer to twenty thousand dollars. And as they put paper to pencil and designed to, to estimating, they quickly saw their, their cost, cost rise, so...
I think this will be a benefit to the entire city, not just the Little League people. So I think we, I'm very appreciative of the Little League for the work that they've done on this, because I think they're helping us. We're really in favor of it.
Buddy, did you have any other comments on the, the drawing? Because I...
No, let me draw one.
Okay. We will have representatives of youth baseball here at your next meeting, and we'll present this formally for your consideration then.
That's good. Again, the source of this would be donation.
Would be the donated funds. You will, at the same time, we'll do an appropriation of this, of those funds.
Okay.
We'll put it on there for your consideration.
Okay.
Will you go to the last one?
Yes.
The last...
Any other questions on that? Don't mean to flame anybody.
Okay. The last work session is really the beginning of a conversation which I think we're going to have ongoing for a while. Members of council talked at a recent meeting about the fact that we have a number of transportation studies, priorities, projects, thoughts, visions, concepts, and that there's really a huge amorphous group of them. We know that we don't have the resources to do all of them. We know that we don't even have the resources to bring all of them to a state of readiness to advance. But council discussed the idea that through a process of, of discussion, hopefully, that you could identify a small handful, meaning something less than five, a small handful of things that are of highest importance to the council, that we can begin, as our resources and staff time allow, to, to, to develop more fully and, and get it right for the inclusion of such things as what becomes AAR, ARA in the future, or VDOT money that is found and needs to be spent and allocated in seventy-two hours, to sort of get ready. And so what I asked Ellen to do, and she really did a great job, is to work with others and come up with just a list of all the things that were out there. These are everything from what the sidewalk committee's vision plan is to what was in the comp plan and other things. So if, we'll let Ellen sort of briefly summarize that, and the conversation will go where, where it'll go.
Where it'll go.
Okay. I guess I'm stepping in as a planner tonight, even though that's not my normal role, since we don't have the principal planner right now. And what I did to kind of gather all these, these road projects together started with a comprehensive plan. And I would recommend, if you want more detail on some of these projects, or just want to see some of the issues that are considered for transportation planning, that you look at the city's two thousand eight to two thousand twenty-eight comprehensive plan, Chapter Seven. There's a lot of good information in there. After I looked at the projects that were done in the comprehensive plan, I looked on, at what we had on the shelf. And there were a couple of projects on the shelf that weren't included in the comprehensive plan, or were essentially the same project presented in a different, little bit different scenario. The other thing I did is I checked with staff. I checked with Public Works, utilities, the police chief, and did some thinking myself, and asked what people, or what staff members' recommendations were. And what you have before you is a very brief summary of the information we have, and I'd like to throw out a couple of caveats. The prices you see before you were the prices that were done with the original study, studies. Since the studies were done at different times by different people, they may not really jibe as well as we would like. They were adjusted for inflation, so you could get a sense of what the two thousand eleven cost would be. But keep in mind that asphalt prices have increased more than the amount of inflation. So you're looking at additional costs for asphalt. Those are tied to the cost of oil. And the other thing is, keep in mind what is not included in those prices. Right-of-way acquisition, drainage, utility relocation, and that's obviously going to increase the prices quite a bit. As you look at this, keep in mind that if we can get small projects where we already own the right-of-way, where maybe there aren't a lot of drainage or utility complications, we may be able to have that, those projects ready for when the regional panel gets together and has a little bit of extra money. I sat through the allocation project, or process, and it was kind of interesting, because basically, they have a huge prioritization of projects. And on the regional basis, projects are prioritized by large interstate projects, multi-jurisdictional projects, major roads, none of which we have in the city. So basically, smaller communities are kind of fighting for the leftovers. So if we have something that's fairly small, or something that's medium-sized, we may be able to come in the next time they're allocating money or considering it, and get moved up on the list.
In short, we make up the change on the Dick project. We get what we need.
Ellen, in, in looking at these lists, I, I noticed Chief Bowen made some suggestions. And there's one I really don't understand, and the, the study recommended a speed limit of thirty miles an hour for roads without sidewalks, and twenty-five miles an hour for roads with sidewalks. And to me, that seems like it's reversed. I don't understand that.
I agree with you. The first time I read that, I was, I had the same reaction. What the report basically says that is, you're not, if you're going to encourage people to walk on the streets, you need to lower the speed limit enough to make sure you're taking into account that the pedestrians are, are safe. Basically, if you encourage walking, lower the speed limit. If you're not going to encourage walking, you can keep it a little bit higher. That was done by a consultant, so that was their rationale. Which means we discourage walking in Pecoson, since we have... That particular road was a very, very, is a very narrow road with ditches right up against the pavement almost. So there really isn't a lot of room for walkers at this point. And I think the consultant was basically saying, either invest the money to widen the right-of-way, because right now, the right-of-way isn't wide enough really to widen the road. Either do it right, or don't encourage walking.
But, but, but the end result to me is, is, is still backwards, because if you don't encourage walking, and, and because of that, you... The study recommended a speed limit of thirty miles an hour without sidewalks. So you don't have sidewalks, and you don't encourage, and, and you don't encourage walking, okay, then it's backwards.
Well, obviously...
Sounds like it's backwards. Why don't we, so that we can kind of move on with this, why don't we just scratch through? Because that could be a fine point. The question is, really, is the Layden Way with Creek-Costin Avenue intersection, is that high on the list? And then we can come through the, the details. So I guess, Ellen, if you just kind of skim through where each project, just real briefly, real, I mean, five words or less on each one.
Having that, your time at the road, not the sidewalks. The first one, With Creek Road, Kerry's Chapel intersection. The only project we currently have on the regional plan is the With Creek Road project, and that project would kind of negate this particular study. The Victory Boulevard, Boulevard corridor appeared to be put in place more as a welcome to the city, and maybe to address left-hand turns in and out of City Hall Avenue, and also to address left-hand turns in and out of the shopping centers as you get close to the With Creek Road-Victory Boulevard intersection. Based on what the police chief said, the area around that intersection where people are going in and out of the commercial entrances is a safety concern. But that caused, that plan would be impacted, depending on whether or not you wanted to proceed with the aesthetic work also. With Creek Road, road enhancements, it seemed to be more about upgrading the road, and that is kind of tied into the Victory Boulevard study also.
Is that tied into the With Creek Road widening that we may be discussing in the future? Or is that at the other end?
This is a different project. This is calling for landscaping islands in the center of the city and the commercial district as it is now. And then if you skip the next page, which is, or the next page shows the With Creek Road widening project, which is the one that is on the regional list. So we do have one on the regional list. And also, we're working on, with Hampton on that one. And Hampton's part was recently funded during the last round of allocations, just as a side note.
Excuse me just a second, but couldn't, couldn't that also be tied in with York County because of the intersection with Kerry's Chapel? That's bringing a large amount of York County traffic through that area, particularly in rush hours, because...
I think the focus is on the Pecoson and Hampton end of it. There would be improvements to that Kerry's Chapel intersection.
Which is within Pecoson.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. But I don't think...
But your, your statement is exactly right. There's a lot of traffic going through there. But the intersection is, that business is about the, is about the line. It's actually a little further up the street.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why we're in it, and they're not.
Yeah. As it stands now, it doesn't include the York County part there. Yorktown Road improvements, that was one of the studies. It'd be nice, but I, with other work going on in that area, if there were ever new development there, maybe that would hit some of that.
You're talking about the Yorktown Road one?
Yes.
Okay.
Little Florida Road improvements. I can tell you from just driving by, this is what strikes me as I'm out inspecting for drainage problems for two reasons. The very narrow shoulders there and the very deep ditches. This was also, Little Florida was noted as one of the areas of concern for staff in terms of safety. The Pecoson Avenue, Little Florida Road-Layden Way intersection is obviously a concern. You've got three roads merging at one spot or close to one spot. You have them coming in at angles that are not perpendicular, which increases safety concerns. Also, that particular area in Little Florida Road has very limited site distance, so...
Do we have many accidents there? Does anybody know that? Is that...
We have many accidents at that intersection.
Do we have many accidents there, Little Florida, Pecoson Avenue, Layden Way?
Honest, I, I know a couple of people...
Why don't we take that off as an action item to ask?
Yeah. Okay.
I've seen a couple of people ending up in the yard, that one corner. There is data in the comprehensive plan on that. I think that was the third ranked, but that data is several years old.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll just remember that.
Sidewalk implementation, we didn't have any estimates for a sidewalk project per se, but what we did have was a unit cost for sidewalks. So what was estimated in the comprehensive plan was a hundred and twenty-five thousand per linear mile of sidewalk. Doesn't include right-of-way acquisition, drainage, you know, culverts or piping, ditches, so you can put the sidewalk in.
Or utility relocation. Right.
Right.
Number match up, buddy.
Future roads. Alpha Street is on the comprehensive plan until there is, until there are users, unless we can really push the fact that it connects, provides connectivity, and reduces traffic on the other roads, it's probably not going to fare well in the regional prioritization tool. So they're looking for making improvements to active roads right now. And if you go through the staff recommendations, you'll see the With Creek Road-Victory Boulevard intersection is mentioned again. That is the scene of the most accidents in the city. The Layden Way-Little Florida-Pecoson Avenue intersection, once again, site distances, just weird angles. Narrow roads with speed limits in excess of twenty-five miles per hour. We just don't have the shoulders that some places do, and that's, that was cited as a cause of some accidents. Got some teenagers going a little too fast, though. The deep ditches, narrow to narrow shoulders, Little Florida, Pecoson Avenue, these were particular areas mentioned. There were a couple accidents in the Pecoson Avenue segment this winter during icy days. Public Works cited the Forest Road turnaround. Apparently, they have a difficult time maneuvering snowplows and larger vehicles at the end of Forest Row, Road. And one other thing...
I think we have a right-of-way down there.
We don't have any right-of-way.
Okay.
I think that's the real thing, is...
That's been the bugaboo the whole time.
School buses used to have a problem down there.
Okay. And finally, there are sections, for example, on Hunts Neck Road, where you have lower areas, you may want to look at major evacuation routes during major storms and figure out if there are a couple of sections where it might be easier to raise the road and kind of make, give your citizens a little, give citizens a little bit more time to get out. In terms of sidewalks, the Citizen Sidewalk Committee, I know, presented their vision plan to you. What I did here is I listed the top three projects, scoring projects, and I included their ranking table that was presented, I think, last year. One thing with those I would recommend is maybe consider a project where we already have the right-of-way. So if a small amount of money on a regional scale becomes available, maybe we can get something going with those if we have the right-of-way space now.
So I guess, in a way, and I don't know exactly where to go with this thing, but I was kind of sitting here as she was, as Ellen was talking, thinking about kind of buckets to put these things in. And to me, there's small-dollar intersection changes that maybe we could almost like tag on to major road improvements with Virginia Beach or Newport News or something, where we tag a Layden Way type of project on that. And we kind of need to prioritize... And we kind of need to prioritize these in like the small dollar bucket, the major improvement bucket. What's the next major road that we want to add to the list? Is it Little Florida? Is it Victory Boulevard? Is there something that I'm not thinking about? Was there another one in there? I don't think so.
Yorktown.
Yorktown. Well, I was saying, and then those that go with development. Because what I heard you say was Yorktown Road probably goes with development, Alpha Street goes with development. And those are ones where we're looking to maybe cost share or strike deals with future development.
You look at, like Chief Bowen said a couple of years ago, was Victory Boulevard should be one of the most important roads because in the case of, you know, in the case of hurricanes or northeasters, that's the main evacuation route out of the city. And to have two lanes is hardly enough. But at the same time, is York County doing anything with Victory Boulevard?
They are not, but we are meeting with York County about.
Three weeks from now.
Three weeks from now and we will add that to the list of stuff to discuss with them and for just talking about, I think that it was at your request that we talked about courthouse, that we got that set up and.
Fees that are equal.
Right. And so that we will add a brief discussion about what their thought process is on Victory Boulevard. We probably corrupt them for that as well.
Let me ask the question about roads since, and I know this is not in any plan that I see now, but a few years ago, there was quite a bit of discussion by council and I suspect some of you may have been on, about the issue of lower Pecoson and Hunts Neck area getting out if there was an emergency or a blockage. There's no one way in and one way out. And as a matter of fact, this winter, I happened to get caught up in one when it was a fire on Hunts Neck Road. There was no way anybody could have gotten in or out of the entire lower end. And I know there was some discussion about at least a study to determine if there was some way to provide at least an emergency exit out of both the lower end and the Hunts Neck area. Has that ever been reconsidered or discussed at all?
It was discussed as you, as you talked about, I think we talked about at the table one time, I remember, Thanks Holloway was the big champion of the point end and I can't remember the Hunts Neck being part of that conversation, but I can see exactly what you're talking about. I also see some avenues for relief on both of those as far as cross connecting roads, maybe with just a wooden, I mean, basically a dirt.
Yeah, just even on, even on an emergency basis is what I'm talking about. I understand we couldn't put major roads in, but.
Right.
Okay.
And I have one comment on the Pecoson Citizen Sidewalk Committee vision plan. I noticed that you have omitted the Pecoson Avenue from Laden Way to With Creek, which was the one, the one project that they thought they could actually get funded soonest.
Okay.
Is that because we're working on, oh, go ahead.
Oh, no. I'm, I basically just took the top three scoring projects. I didn't.
Another recommendation, because the recommendation was to do from Laden Way to With Creek Road on Pecoson Avenue.
I, the recommendation would still stand. I was just basically summarizing the other projects. So that there's, that wasn't intended to make a comment on that project.
I think that was, that's right here, With Creek to Forest.
Right. But what they, it wasn't one of the top numbered numerical scores, but when they figured out, you know, what we could actually get funding for, that was part of connecting existing things, so.
Okay, so how, what can we do to, I guess, but I guess what I would ask is, I know we're getting running out of time in this workshop session. I would ask everybody to kind of put them in those, in those three buckets in the order in which you want. Let's see if we just have some basically agreement. And that will allow the staff to prioritize, okay, let's work up some real estimates so that when I'm attending or Buddy is attending the TPO and there are small unexpected dollars, we can stand up and say, we have a ready to go project for small dollars. I think we ought to send them up in those buckets, small dollar changes or, you know, smaller improvements. Major improvements, what's the council's pleasure on major improvements? Is it, where's Little Florida or is it, you know, do you want to wait until the outcome of the meeting with York County to see if there, there's an attraction on Victory Boulevard? And then those that are with development. And then I think we'll keep sidewalks as a separate issue because so far we've been going after, after.
Grants.
Grants with those. Okay? Is that agreeable to everybody? And just send your lists back to staff. Are you guys?
I have a suggestion which borrows from your idea. Why don't, why don't we work together and try to rake those, all of the projects into those boxes?
Okay.
And we'll tell you what criteria we use to define small, medium and large so that if you want to change that criteria, you can.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll give you that list. And then maybe if each councilman, just tell, just check off the two you're most interested in each box.
Yeah.
Then that will form the things that we can focus on, the thing you all can talk about more. We can refine those things further and it's not how many checks you get, but if it gets one, that's enough for us to vest some additional time in. And then, and then we'll come back this summer more than likely. We knew that today is just the beginning of the conversation. This is 30 years in the making and it's important.
If I can throw one more thing out there, I would also recommend that one of the areas be very, very small projects in case we get, you know, VDOT fines $40,000 and lets us put in, move a driveway, a commercial driveway entrance or lets us do a small section of sidewalk. And the other thing to bear in mind is that we also have to go through a little bit of the regional getting on the list process. So even if we were to prioritize cost estimate today, in all likelihood, it could take almost a year to get started in the ranking process. So it's, it's a very time consuming process, but obviously if we don't get started sometime, we're never going to get on the list at all, so.
Agreed. Is covering a ditch part of the road project, you know, covering piping?
If you cover and pipe and are using it to install sidewalks, so maybe you can get congestion mitigation and air quality funding if it is a hazardous area perhaps, but based on the regional priorities, I think you would want a secondary purpose to just piping the ditch. Maybe, you know, doing something else to improve site distance or like I said, installing the sidewalks. And the other thing to keep in mind too is with some of these projects, as we get into drainage system retrofits, maybe that'll combine with a road project down the line. Thanks.
Anything else? So, or by any bar five more? Excuse me. Excuse me.